First thing is roll call. We have five regular members tonight, so Var, you're an alternate tonight, so you won't be voting, but I'm glad to see you're here.
It is for Senator White.
And the next item is any adjustments anyone has to the agenda?
None.
None for me.
None, okay. We need a motion to accept that the agenda is written in.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, we accept the agenda as written. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, everybody has or will have a chance to look at the plan board minutes from October 17th meeting.
And will we accept the minutes as presented?
I'll second.
Been moved and second, we accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor? Five zero zero. Next thing on the agenda is the final plan for the subdivision of Christopher and Diane Colby. It's a four lot subdivision, lots 24D through 24F, map number two, 89 Prospect Street in the mixed residential zone. And let me ask, well, the fee's been paid, first of all, for the final plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody looking at him.
We all agree.
Were there any changes you made since the preliminary?
No.
No changes.
Okay. I guess we'll move on then. Just to go back a little bit, we've had the preliminary plan reviewed by the board, and there were no special applications or things that any board member would change, or no additional items that we needed. We held a public meeting, and nobody from the public showed up, so we had no comments from the public meeting. So that brings us to where we are. And if you all have the subdivision ordinance on page 29, Article 10 of the subdivision ordinance, performance and design standards. Now, you know we will need individual motions on all of the 15 performance and design standards.
So you want a motion in 10 dot one, not 10 dot one A and B?
Yeah, I think we can roll it into 10 dot whatever.
Okay.
So we'll start there at 10 dot one, which is a basic subdivision layout. If you want to go over A and B and C...
They have to do with streets, and there's no streets involved, so to me, A is not applicable, and D has been done. Where's B and C? Oh, yeah, that's in 10, one, A, five. Was the lot numbering reviewed by the 9/11 addressing officer?
That's Randy.
Randy? That's been done?
Yeah, when we get it set out, I'll give them all the numbers.
Now, if you look under five, there's, at the end of five, there's, at least in mine, there's C, utilities.
Yeah.
And that includes the next paragraph, if you will. And there is something in there that I believe that we should list as a condition of approval, 10 dot one. And I'll throw this out to the board, but the utilities must be underground because the street frontage is less than 125 feet. Now, maybe I'm reading that incorrectly here.
Yeah. So I move 10 dot one has been met with the proviso that since the street frontage is less than 125 feet, the utilities will be installed on the ground.
I'll second.
Second on that. Is there any discussion on that? This basically goes to whoever buys the lot to put a building on it. I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with you, but, or with Chris, but it should be put in as a condition.
Okay. What's the refreshing, what's the reasoning on that? So you won't have two utility poles unless they're close together from each other coming in?
I don't know. You were part of the...
We all were.
We all were.
We copied it. It's the only thing I think of, because on this one, it's kind of short, and like the water lines, sewer lines are coming in like close to each other. You've got two and two rather than four individual ones.
Right.
You could almost run utilities the same way. They're not big lots. But I'd say that's about there.
You know, is that something they can have a stub, you know, a stub pole out front and then run underground to a house?
Yes.
Exactly. We're talking phone and cable and...
Electric. I'm saying electric in particular.
You're our expert on electric. Between you and a gentleman taping this...
He knows more about it than I do. I would defer to him, but, yeah, you get into, if you don't have all these 125 feet, you run into problems of line crossing, you've got a pole on someone else's property, and it's going to serve yours, you've got to get rights of way, and it gets nasty for whoever's buying the lot.
Okay. I'm sorry. We need, it's been moved and seconded, and also the condition that utilities must be underground. All those in favor of that? Five zero zero. The second one is 10 dash one.
10 dot two.
Two, I'm sorry. Sufficient water. And we do, as I'll remind you all, it's going to be public water and sewer, and we do have a letter from the Water Department saying that there is sufficient.
I move that condition has been met.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, the condition of sufficient water, 10 dash two, or 10 dot two has been met. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, the next one is 10 dash three, which is erosion and sediment and impact on water bodies.
I think there is a water body near there, right? So I move that this is not applicable.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second one, the not applicable?
Tom? Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of that motion? Five zero zero. Next one is 10 dash four, sewage disposal. And again, we have a letter from our...
Owen.
Howard, yeah, saying that there's more than enough capacity. So I take a motion on that.
I move that has been met.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconded?
Yep.
Discussion on that? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Let's move on to 10 five. 10 five, it's solid waste.
I move that that's been met because we have a letter from saying that it does not exceed the capacity.
Tom, you want to give us a second?
I'll second. Or somewhere else.
I want to earn his money.
Any discussion on that? It's been moved and seconded, 10 dot five, solid waste disposal has been met. All those in favor? Five zero zero. 10 dash six on page 32 is impact on natural beauty. Again, if folks want to go down to A, B, C, D, E, forget whether there's an F, no F, individually if you want to. Probably not applicable.
I didn't think there was anything up there that had to do with this stuff. No sure, I'm not for sure.
And you had, there were letters there too from that historic, critical areas.
Okay, the first one, 10, I had some questions. 10, Bay one, which was limited to clearing of trees, and as Randy pointed out, it's mostly brush, and there aren't really any trees in that area that should be limited, not taken down. If you look at 10 dot six B, I believe it's B four, which is on page 33. Talks about recreational space.
I wouldn't think he had very much room for that.
No. And the other point is, there is recreational space at the church, which is catty corners across the street, and also the subdivision below Otis. There was an area set aside for recreation down there, so there is close by recreation There is no wildlife according to the state, except a passing rabbit or coyote or something.
You've got the Randy repub, they have a coyote.
Always he can shoot that deer.
And there is no shoreline zone. So did we come up with the conclusion it's not applicable in this case?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that 10 dash six is impact on natural beauty would not be applicable. Can I, all those in favor of that? Five zero zero. 10 dot seven, conformance with other zoning ordinances. I think we've been through the land use ordinance, which would be the only other ordinance that would be applicable in this particular instance.
And to pass that, so I move 10 dot seven is, has been met.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, 10 dot seven, conformance with zoning ordinances and other land use ordinances, has been met. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, moving to the next one, 10 dash, or 10 dot eight, financial and technical capacity. Again, the financial is basically if there's utility improvements needed, such as a road and whatever goes along with it, like sidewalks and all. And obviously, we have the technical capacity because we've gotten satisfactory plans and whatnot from a surveyor. So whether this is applicable or whether it's met is your call.
I think it's been met. We discussed this earlier in one of the earlier reviews. So I move it's been met.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, that financial and technical capacity has been met. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion? Five zero zero. Next one is 10 dot nine, which is impact on groundwater quality and quantity. So what's your opinion, whether it's applicable or not?
I move it's not applicable.
I'll second this one. I'll get ahead of dawn.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Floodplain management.
Not applicable.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Floods up there will all make trouble.
I guess we'll find out tonight, isn't it? Or is it last night?
George will.
Identification, 10 dot 11, which is identification of freshwater, wetlands, rivers, streams, and brooks. And if I remember the plat plan that's been identified?
Yes.
A brook running through...
Back corner there.
Of one lot or two lots. So has that been met then?
Forested wetlands there?
Oh, yes, they are.
I thought they were identified yet.
Yeah, I have a lot in mind.
No, I just, just refreshing my memory.
I believe so.
Forested wetland dominated by red maple.
Thank you.
It's about cat and iron gales.
Do we get a motion on that?
I move it's been met.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, 10 dot 11, identification of wetlands, rivers, streams, and brooks has been met. Is there any discuss, further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Stormwater management. Is that applicable?
I don't think that's applicable, is it?
There'd be no roads, no culverts.
But it must be a statement. Statement?
Statement. I move it is not applicable.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, stormwater management in this case is not applicable. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero.
I move 10 dot 13 is not applicable. There is no cluster development going on.
I'll second.
Oof, I'm going to move it.
It's been moved and seconded, that 10 dot 13, cluster development is not applicable.
That's cluster development, and number nine doesn't affect, doesn't affect it.
Yeah, but that's if it's part of a cluster development, you're going to have them go onto common road within the cluster, and there's, they're all individual lots, like individual homes.
That's what I said. Not applicable, that's special, that one. Other than that, you know. You must have some idea then.
Well, yeah, it's, if you look at, on page 39, at least mine on A2, all subdivisions where three or more lots, units are more, are created within a five-year period, and the project is not located in either the industrial, marine, or residential three zoning districts shall be designated as cluster development.
Why? Why would they be automatically considered a cluster development if they're not in one of those three zones?
I think part of it has to do with, with, here again, the common, or actually, common lands, or lands for recreation. It was really a trade-off that, you know, we let you build structures closer together in that area if you gave us some land for development and recreation, something of that nature.
Okay, so if the lots meet the minimum lot size for building a single occupancy home, I'm not sure what the problem is.
Yeah, I, believe me, I don't think there is a problem.
Yeah, there's, there's no need, you know, for common space if you've got, you know, adequate land size for a building lot.
There's no roads, no paths, really.
No.
Right. Service of packing areas.
Yeah, if you look at, I guess it's B three on page 39, the plan board shall allow lots within cluster developments to be reduced in lot areas, street frontage and lot width below the minimum normal required by this ordinance and return provisions for a common open space. So I really think that that was why that was put in there about cluster developments. So it's up to the board. I really want to say that it's, it's not applicable in this case.
I don't, because as you mentioned, the reason why it was put in there, the problems that would have occurred if you didn't are mitigated by the fact that, you know, the lot sizes are adequate.
Yeah.
You know, so the, it may not be the letter of the law, but certainly the spirit of the law has certainly been met, and there wouldn't be any undue hardship on people moving in there, you know, the way it's laid out.
Bruce, did you want to add something? I see you're still reading.
No, it talks, just if you look two under the, the building envelope, we don't have any building envelope.
Well, we do. The building envelope was, I believe on your plan there is...
My show houses and driveways. The building envelope, they're all, they're all for site development.
Well, the idea of a cluster development is a smaller than normal lot.
Right.
Because we're trying to cluster a number of residences.
Right.
For whatever reason, maybe for low income or whatever, that's not germane to this.
Yeah.
Right.
You're, you're trade-off, you're not, you're not giving up the square footage or the acreage for a dwelling unit.
Right.
Where you put them in this, and you're putting that land in another area.
Right.
And by the time you go down through, you can do it, as they say, for steep slope for wetlands or other places there.
Thank you.
It's been my experience that if you're going to do a cluster development, you start off as a cluster development, and present it that way to the board.
That would be normal, but we're not normal. I just don't know why we got that in there. Lots of more.
Okay, so there's no further discussion on it. It's been moved and seconded, that is not applicable in this particular case. All those in favor? Five zero zero.
He's a little slow, but he gets it. Yeah, a little slow.
Let's go to 10 dot 18, I believe is the next one.
Yep.
Which is...
Timber harvesting rules.
And again, I believe this is not applicable in this case.
Any timber harvesting rules applicable?
Correct, Randy?
I wouldn't think so, no.
Nope. Then we do a stake in them.
So can I get a motion that it's not applicable? Thank you, Tom.
I move it's not applicable.
It's been moved and seconded, that this is not applicable in this particular case. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero.
I move 10 dot 15, traffic conditions in streets, not applicable because there are no streets.
Very good. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, 10 dot 15 is not applicable in this particular case. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero.
Thank you.
How about a total motion on the applicable performance standards?
I move that the applicable performance standards in the site plan review ordinance, section 10, performance and design standards.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, excuse me. Subdivision ordinance have been met.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, driving right along, if we can turn to page four, which has statute, 2.2, statutory Okay, the first one is A will not result in undue water or air pollution. This actually was not covered, the water, or the air pollution in the last performance standards, so I will need a motion on that.
I move that this project will not result in undue air pollution.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, if we go to B, which is sufficient water... Okay, if we go to B, which is sufficient water, we already covered that in ten dot two, so we don't need anything else. Existing water, which is C, we covered that in ten dot two, so we don't need an additional motion. D, soil erosion, we've covered that in ten dot three. E, which is road congestion. We've mentioned that in ten fifteen. That being said, if you look at, yeah, on the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If you look in the letter from James Gilway, the town manager, on his letter of October fourteenth, he brings out, Darrell, you've placed the driveways in, in the site plan, in the plat plan, excuse me. And he makes a comment, the placement of the driveways allow for safe ingress and egress. It is my opinion that if the driveway representation on the plat plan should change, that they do not become any closer than the two closest that are represented on, on your plat plan. So, it's my opinion that that should be a condition, that the driveways are no closer than two. And here again, you know why, because you get two people coming out of the driveway and turning into each other. So, it's a safety concern.
Second.
Or they should just be as presented on the plat plan.
As presented, yeah.
Okay.
More no closer than, maybe give them some leeway, no closer than the two closest ones.
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry.
If it is safer there, then if you say it's no closer than the two closest, you're still gonna be safe to matter how they change it.
Right. I'm sorry, was that a motion?
If you made a motion, then I'll second it, or if not, I'll make that a motion.
Make an emotion.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any further discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor? Five zero zero.
Well, we covered just about all the others.
Yeah, we have, just going down, sewage waste disposal is ten four, solid waste was ten five, natural beauty, we covered under ten six, conformance with ordinance was ten seven, financial and technical is ten eight. Frontage and shore, and shoreline zoning are within two hundred and fifty. I'm looking at K now. Right. Wouldn't be applicable, so that, we've covered also in there, the quality of the water is mentioned in there and will not diversely affect the, the quality of the water. And we covered that in ten three. Quality of under L, quality of groundwater was ten three. M, floodplain management was ten ten. Identifying the wetland, wetlands was ten eleven. Streams or brooks identification was ten eleven. Stormwater management was ten twelve, we covered that. Q, which is, any river or stream or brook within, and the budding or proposed subdivision has to be identified on any map. And which, which, I'm sorry, that was. Q, if any lots in the proposed subdivision have shore, frontage on a river, stream, brook, great pond, or coastal wetlands, and so forth. There is a seasonal brook, isn't it, up there?
Yeah, it's a drainage brook.
A drainage brook.
Part of that was man-made.
Which wouldn't come under this classification, so actually, we haven't covered that, so I'd take a motion to make it not applicable.
So moved, yep.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, the Q, shore, frontage is not applicable in this case. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, and then proceeding along is R, which goes under increasing or long-term cumulative effects of phosphorus concentration. Again, I believe it to be not applicable.
Quite a waste, a great pond.
Well, I don't know what's creating the phosphorus.
Well, if it was a farm, you could say the fur line.
Fur line.
That's right, yes. But I mean, speaking of this particular development, I don't see any that would create phosphorus, so I move that it's not applicable.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Five zero zero.
And you're using salt, town salt, salt particles up it makes it more applicable.
Right, low phosphorus. Okay, S is crossing municipal boundaries, so that would be not applicable also, so.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Sorry about that.
Five zero zero. Okay, and the last one too, which is liquidition harvesting, we covered in ten fourteen. So, at this time, let's take a total motion on the statutory review criteria, the applicable statutory review criteria.
I move that the applicable sections of the statutory review, review criteria of the subdivision ordinance have been met.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions?
I'm awake now.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, it's time for a motion on the subdivision plan, the final subdivision plan.
I move we approve the final subdivision plan.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
What?
With the conditions.
Yes, with the stipulations that we put in.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Do you have something for us to sign?
Yes.
Way to say that.
Randy, do you have an official copy here?
Yes, I do.
You want to pass that around? I just...
I don't have the information on it, but this is the official one that he put in.
Why would you even buy a check like that?
I'm not giving him a check, so, but okay. Randy, why don't you make this one for, for our records, file profit.
I'm by your plane.
Did you have a write-down?
No.
This is the doctor's sound just before. Go inside this, I want to see it again.
Not as bad as Randy's used to be.
Randy, while we're looking for, do you have any, you ought to report you want.
The only thing I want, I just want to run, you all got the memo that I left in your box?
Yes.
And I just wanted to know if you have any comments on that, if it was acceptable to everybody. Today, I did receive, I received the receipts that I needed. I, I knew I had them, but they were on, on the computer, they sent them to me. And I've written up with this report, I put this with the report in Lane's file on the, on the posthum, so it's all in the file, so that if there's ever any question, it's there in file. So, if you guys, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page and everybody's...
Yep. It's within one to three. And you were satisfied, so that works. I like your new stationery, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
That's been very classy, yeah. Looks good.
You can finish filling them out, and, and get Darrell, send Darrell a copy.
I'll have to send it to you, because I can get the information on top of it. I gotta get the information on top here, I haven't got that all.
Any other business to come? Randy, was that all you had to do?
Yes, that's, uh, yes, that's it.
Okay. Any other business to come before us tonight?
I move, we adjourn. No? Oh, no, we got this stuff? Oh, well, there's no public, right?
Debbie, see? Why, why don't we sign these, and then, and then we'll adjourn immediately?
Yeah, I was gonna say, they wouldn't like it if they got adjourned, then we signed everything.
Yes.
Dark room. It's, uh, interesting, the lane of Folsom. Or, or...
Yeah, yeah. I've noticed lately, his bulk cement truck, they all was cementing, probably.
They're not, busy.
A thousand dollars for the, for the parts you guys got.
Okay, so four twenty-five plus fifty plus...
I'll just put seven twenty down.
You pay fifty.
Yeah. You must.
Four twenty-five.
Where do we, uh...
You put seven thirty, you don't get more paid.
You get a thousand back. And then I pay four hundred. Yeah. Yeah, well, the fee would be, the amount of the fee would be ninety-five dollars.
Thanks, Debbie.
Night. Darrell, you want to guide them on where we're deciding these?
Yep. Right here, I got them all laid out. And I'm like, honey, eight copies you guys want, signed. I have three here, but you sign one or two.
I'll just sign all three.
Yeah. I like to have one paper copy for my client.
That's fine. One for your file, and one for the registry, I guess.
Registry is a pilot.
Yeah, I think so.
Do you have a miler there?
I have two.
I hate to watch him sign good. Remember Randy used to sign them with a straight line?
Yeah.
Thought you were ready, yeah?
No, I know, I really don't, but I...
Yeah.
I've had to do a lot of research on some of these things.
It was nice.
Bruce?
It took me a while to realize who head right now was.
Maybe this will go ahead, we go right down the road.
Yep. Oh, we're gonna sign this one too?
Do you need to stick around to the adjournments?
No, no, go ahead.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Laura. Good to see you again.
Hope you get educated.
Working on it. Have a good night.
Laura? You can't put your jacket on until we adjourn.
I know.
Much better down here than upstairs.
Yeah.
It's warmer. It's not warmer down here.
Not so much the draft?
Yeah.
George, we got to go.
Go ahead, dog.
No, you can have that. I'm just trying to figure what they have for condition.
Oh, I got them written down. Utilities must be undergraffed for lots. Darrell, you're doing nice work.
Thank you.
I bought some loa, I bought some loa from Mount for Chris tonight.
You did?
Yep. Could get much closer miles than he was. There you go.
Did you get a good deal, though? Did you get a good deal?
Yeah. You know, Chris.
Everybody gets a deal.
Everybody gets a deal, Chris.
I bought, I bought lots, some loa from them, that was very happy.
Driveways, driveways.
Thank you.
Nice, good night.
Driveways to be no closer than lots two and three, as shown.
No closer than lots two and three?
Yep. As shown.
You know he's gonna do it, remember that power day you got there? If one, if one next to the road, maybe...
What's he gonna do with it?
He's gonna put it fifteen feet the other side of the pipeline, and make a binarization, grass it over. That's what he told me this late Saturday noon.
I didn't see him for a while. I was gonna thank him for cleaning up the yard next door to me.
You're spot around the top one.
Well, I thank him for mowing the grass up the end of the street, so you see it all over. If I live up in our street, you wouldn't see down the road at all, because of that grass is weed.
Come on, let's go here.
I'm busy.
Your business to do.
We take longer, you can see your text dollars at work.
Let's see, a hundred dollars a year, that comes out. Are we up to a penny yet?
You want to sign that one, huh?
Over there, over there. Yeah.
Did you guys like? Sixty minutes last night?
No.
Were you trumping?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said his salary is, is only gonna take a dollar.
Okay. All right.
Well, his money was four hundred thousand a year.
I know. Coffee money.
We signed enough, so Randy, you have one? Darrell, you have the other ones, or we did?
My larynx one paper is all I need.
I don't want to say anything about Trump again.
So, we didn't sign this one, do you want this one signed also?
No. That's up to you guys, I'd like to have one signed one, so. You'll have one signed one, and...
Nothing.
Can everybody sign this last one?
It was coming up, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was covered on. Here.
Little pen holder. You're gonna take that away?
No, you stick it in your pocket.
The presidential. Brian?
Brian, you got one more to sign.
You have one more to sign?
Yeah, it was hidden.
You gotta get that column.
Yeah. I'm waiting for them.
After you, sir.
No, go ahead. I always follow you.
Oh, God, I don't, oh, I don't like the sounds of that.
We did that all the others, it's just, they look the same. They'll say, no, this is a duplicate.
Actually, you have to have them in the same order, they won't accept them.
Yeah.
Really?
That's a duplicate copy.
I never knew that.
A duplicate copy.
Well, I'm sure enough, I would do it out of order, just for the...
I'm gonna have to make up the rest of them. So we can keep one of these?
That copy's here, so we don't care.
Yeah, it's his guy. Randy, this, I guess this is for your file?
Okay.
I don't have, like, the letters from the manager.
This one right here, one that, two, three, you signed it. Wait there, take that one off, put this on the name.
He'll kill me one day, I'll, I'll, back then. Jimmy, make ballpoint.
What do you think, what it's for, yeah?
Really?
I don't know. You sign it?
Oh, really?
Otis will agree.
Otis will agree, yeah.
Does Jackie?
You're all over in on the plan board meeting.
He has, must be asking, he had chairs due.
Is that it?
I'm gonna say, Jackie, get in there, please.
Take him out if he's adjourned.
Yeah, all those in favor?
All in favor.
Seven twenty.